Welcome to the Moisty Voice episode fifty-eight where Michael's gonna tell us something about fifty-eight.
Did you know that fifty-eight miles per hour is the minimum wind speed needed for a severe thunderstorm warning?
It's fucking stupid.
Yeah.
I feel like it should be much higher than that.
Fifty-eight fucking miles per hour?
That doesn't feel-
That's Michael, we have Nick.
I'm Nick.
And I'm Connor. You guys step away for a second, I have syrup in my face.
He's got syrup in his face, um-
Sounds hot.
So, I mean, I was gonna open the podcast with this, but I feel like it's mostly a Connor-related question.
Okay.
Or at least I think, I think Connor can relate to it more, but I'm gonna start with Michael.
Yeah.
Was Haunted Mansion a movie first or a ride first?
Ride first.
So it was a ride based on, or a movie based on the ride?
Oh yeah, it was.
Okay. There was like an old one, right? Like a really old one before the Eddie Murphy one?
No.
Connor.
Hi.
Haunted Mansion was a ride first, right? Then they made movies based off the ride?
Yep.
Was it movies? Was there an old one?
Don't believe so.
That's Tower of Terror I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
That, that was a thing.
Yeah, the, um, the ride was made, then the movie. Movie wasn't terrible.
No, it was not.
The Haunted Mansion movie?
It, uh, it did not have enough time. I, I, I felt like it came and went.
In the movie.
I feel like it came and went way too quickly, like, I remember Disney Channel had like little trailers in between episodes and things. Where, uh, like the talking heads would sing whatever they were commercializing.
Yeah.
Um, but that was about it. And I don't know, I just, I feel like now that the ride's gone, I've just been sort of reflecting on it.
How do you mean?
I don't know, I just, I feel like-
Ride gone?
It's, uh, the, the thing now. Haunted Mansion's-
Tower of Terror is Guardians, um, breakout.
Wait, so Haunted Mansion still exists?
Haunted Mansion is still Haunted Mansion. I was there in May. It's Haunted Mansion.
Oh, then I don't care about Haunted Mansion again.
Yeah.
I will presume not caring until it goes away and then I'll care again.
We're talking about Guardians Breakout, the second movies, the, the follow-up ride to the movie known as Guardians. Uh, The Defenders, Guardians, The Defenders, where you've got a werewolf, a man who can move mountains, a blade master. And a martial artist, together, separate, they are freaks, but together, they're, I, I don't fucking remember-
You're referencing something, but I didn't know.
Movie that they saw at F Y E.
Oh, okay.
It's the most C-list movie I've ever seen us sell at F Y E.
I saw the best action movie title the other day, meaning today.
Die Hard With A Vengeance.
No, it was on the bottom of a box for like some Shopkins toy or something.
You lose?
And it was on like the shipper, and it just said, Origin, colon, Vietnam.
Shit.
And I was like, damn if that's not a great movie title.
Shit.
If you just, you give me something and it's like, you know, Bruce Willis or Liam Neeson, it just says-
Willis, Sylvester Stallone, and like Tommy Lee Jones.
It just says Origin, Vietnam. I'd be like, shit, I, I wanna see that. I don't know, that, uh. That just stuck with me for a while today. I, I really took that one in.
What is Vietnam? How did it start?
Uh, I don't think that really matters.
To Bruce Willis just murdering a guy in the forest.
It's not even a Vietnamese guy, it's like a Russian or something.
Like he's actually just like in the middle of Africa, nowhere near, just like killing people in the forest.
It's very important that Vietnam is not actually in Origin Vietnam. It's totally like a code word thing, except it's not even a code for anything.
It's like how Captain America, The Winter Soldier actually took place in like July. That felt pretty cheated.
Yeah, I don't get why, uh, why that was a thing.
Spider-Man Homecoming, like-
Like there's Homecoming Dance.
Was there? I'm pretty sure that was prom.
There wasn't a homecoming, like he never, he never came home from anything.
Yeah, if anything, the next Spider-Man movie is Homecoming.
But the next one is called Away From Home.
Away From Home, it's the furthest you could be.
Well, it's also like Dust To Dust.
It should have been the third one as Homecoming.
Yeah, cuz that's such a good third movie title. I don't know, I mean, I'm excited for the second one.
I mean, I'm excited for it, just because it's Tom Holland. He's, he's a pretty good, pretty good guy.
And maybe we'll get some, some Sinister Sixers and that'll be fun.
It's, I would love to, but I don't know how Marvel's gonna, cuz they've got so many different things and plans with their MCU right now. I'm not sure how big their Spider-Man ones are.
Yeah, I don't know how much, um, standalone stuff, cuz you can't build Avengers leading up to all of this stuff. While also building a Spider-Man leading up to a super group thing.
Yeah, if, if they did the full Spider-Man thing, they would basically be breaking themselves into three different, like, movie, uh, pillars. And one is Avengers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think Guardians Three is gonna be Last Guardians.
Yeah.
I hope it is, dear god.
Yeah.
Guardians Two should have been Last Guardians, in my opinion. Um, but still James Gunn on Guardians Three, so that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it would, it would end up being like Avengers with, uh, what they're going into New Avengers, and then with, uh, Captain Marvel showing up. It's gonna be like Spider-Man's pillar, and then they're gonna have whatever succeeds Guardians.
Yeah, and that's just too much.
It's so much. It's right now basically been two pillars.
It's actually a shame, because I would really love a just like, forget the MCU, except for maybe like. Character development things, and just run with Spider-Man, cuz Spider-Man is like the best franchise to just run with. He's got the best supergroups, he's got, you know, for films, some of the best villains that you can use for it.
It's the same reason why there have been so many Batman movies.
Too many great villains.
Spider-Man is Marvel's Batman, and it's all about the rogues gallery. You could do a million Spider-Man movies and still have new people. And not all of them are bad, and some people who thought some of them are bad are wrong, because Jake Gyllenhaal still gave you Mysterio.
Yeah, nobody would have thought that one.
I don't think anybody was putting money on Mysterio.
I, I think he was literally my last pick for people who might ever come up in a movie.
I'm so glad he wasn't though.
I'm really hoping they go full fucking fishbowl. I, I want it to be weird.
Full fishbowl.
It's gotta be weird.
Jake Gyllenhaal for five minutes, and then Jake Gyllenhaal wearing an opaque fishbowl for like fifty minutes.
I'm, I'm psyched for it.
It's not even a stunt actor, it's just him in the bowl the entire time.
And I'm, I kinda hope they go like the full spandex, like tight, yeah, the dumbass gloves. I want them to ham it the hell up, but, uh-
Speaking of Spider-Man stuff though, um, Sony's Venom verse is growing.
Yeah, and it's-
So, they're still treating it and calling it a Spider-verse.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but as far as the deal between them and, uh, Marvel went, it's Sony during the terms of the deal, which I haven't checked. If it's, uh, willing, uh, like expiration, or what date they've agreed to until, or if it's in discussion, whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but they don't get Spider-Man live action. They still have all animation Spider-Man, which is why Enter The Spider-verse is happening.
Which is super sick.
Which is also very, very cool. Um, but while Marvel has Tom Holland's Spider-Man.
Mm-hmm.
The Venom verse can't get a live-action Spider-Man.
Which I'm okay with.
I'm almost okay with it, but the big thing that ties the whole Spider-verse together is quite literally Spider-Man.
Yeah.
Like a lot of Batman stuff, uh, the relationships span across, and a lot of them can exist independently.
You can have a lot of Batman movies without Batman.
You could have so many Batman movies without Batman.
There's a lot of Batman movies without Batman.
Yeah.
You can't have that many Spider-Man movies without Spider-Man.
Yeah.
You can try, it's not gonna go well.
You can try, well, no, it's, you can do a Venom standalone.
Yeah.
You can do, uh, Morbius standalone for some reason.
Yeah.
Um, we'll get to that in a second, but you, um, you can't then have them come together unless they're Spider-Man. Whereas if you do like a Penguin standalone movie, a Two-Face standalone movie, and a Joker standalone movie, they can still come together without Batman.
Well, and it's because they, pretty early into it, set up the possibility of Suicide Squad. That, you know, it's the villains teaming up to fight a greater bad. And the Spider-Man villains, that just doesn't make sense to.
No, all of the Spider-Man villain teams have been specifically to kill Spider-Man.
That's like their whole purpose, is kill Spider-Man.
You guys to kill the Batman.
But Jared Leto, um, announced for Morbius, Mobius, um-
Morbi, Mobi?
Mobius strip, Jared Leto.
Uh, yeah, Morbius, uh, it's a, it's a Spider-Man vampire.
Yeah.
Um-
He's super hot.
It's set in the Venom verse with Tom Hardy that begins on October fifth.
Woo!
Woo!
We're gonna get that tongue for a lot of years.
And I can't be more excited for it.
Do you think Jared Leto is a good pick for it? Besides being a good pick for most things that he does, cuz he's just way too talented.
Yeah, there are the two things, is one, I don't know Morbius that well, because no one does. Because despite many efforts to bring him into greater, uh, limelight, he's never gotten, uh, that recognition. The closest he got to an on-screen performance previously, uh, was when they did Blade Back When.
Yeah.
They wanted him to be the main antagonist of Blade Two, but they ended up going a different route.
Yeah.
Um, but now he's getting his own movie, and it's, uh. It's a scientific vampire, um, he isn't like Dracula or some shit.
No, yes.
Some weird experiment, as is with any comic book hero, turns him into a vampire.
Which is cool.
Which is cool, I mean, yeah, if I could just like somehow fuck up trying to cure, uh, cure herpes and just become a vampire, that's also okay.
Be like, you know what? I, I can be a vampire with herpes.
Still technically, yeah, cure for herpes, I didn't fail. And I still get paid by the pharmaceutical companies.
Oh, yeah. Oh, man, you, you know how much the military complex would pay for vampires?
What if you cured Lupus?
I don't think there's any demand.
Really? I think that there are some cats trying to man you to cure Lupus.
Shut up.
Bad, no, go away.
What is with your cats Lupus thing?
I don't know.
Did you watch the trailer?
I did watch the trailer, but like, this predates, your thing with Lupus very much predates the trailer, like you, Lupus has been a thing for you for a while. Do you have Lupus, Michael?
Because of, um, and I, I hate to name drop people that clearly influence us, but it's because of Fun House.
Yeah, cuz the dog has Lupus, right?
Yeah, Lupus jokes there that he, he has latched on to.
Yeah, my mom has Lupus. So, I don't understand Lupus because of it. Because I'm like, what even is it?
It's the thing that you get when you're a dog person.
In any case, Jared Leo's gonna kill it because he's an amazing actor, he's one of my favorite actors of the modern day.
Too good at what he does.
He is such talent, and I, again, I'll push it again, cuz I don't think anyone's, go watch The Outsider, it's great, he's amazing. Um, but Morbius isn't the only movie being added to the Sp- uh, Venom verse, which I, I will not call the Spider-verse.
No, it's the Venom verse.
Um, there are still rumors of, uh, Black Cat and Silver Sable movies.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Um, which are pretty interesting, in my opinion, I think that's gonna be pretty cool.
I think it's cool.
If, the only thing is, uh, you can't Black Cat without Spider-Man.
Again, it's, it's weird.
It's, I, I don't know in what's like universe it happens, but I pray to god that in three years. Like after Venom is released, after Morbius releases, it's gonna be Sinister Six, and Andrew Garfield comes back for Spider-Man Three. And it's with this, uh, fucking A-list cast that they've put together.
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be so okay with it.
I want Andrew Garfield back.
I want him back so bad. I hate Sony.
I love Tom Holland, but goddamn was Andrew Garfield a big influence of me giving a shit about Spider-Man again.
He was, we've said it before, um, between the three live-action Spider-Mans. Peter Parker, uh, sorry, uh, Tobey Maguire.
Was he how synonymous that is?
Best Peter Parker.
Yeah, that's just a little too ingrained.
It was way too, um, Andrew Garfield was the best Spider-Man.
Yeah.
He killed being Spider-Man so much better than Tobey Maguire did, and Tom Holland doesn't reach either role as high as them, but he's like, if. Tobey Maguire's pure, uh, pure Parker is up here, and Andrew Garfield is down here, and then it's reversed for Garfield. Holland is just between the two, but a little bit higher than the midway point for both of them. And that's why he's so enjoyable, is because he isn't just good at one of them, he's good at both of them.
I think it's a lot of the writing. But, uh. Tom Holland was the better Spider-Man for me, largely because of just the writing of Spider-Man.
The writing in making Spider-Man movies was great.
The, the Homecoming, well, no, for, it was Tom Holland to me, that Homecoming.
You just said Garfield.
No, I said Holland. We'll play it back later.
He said Holland.
Um, like his Peter was very interesting and different, but, uh. His Spider-Man was just so fun, and part of it is because of the writing, part of it's just cuz Tom Holland's fucking adorable.
Yes.
So like him just being a little-
Fat ass though.
He's been being a scrappy little thick boy, is, uh, it's pretty fun to watch.
It's, I, with Marvel though, and we were talking about, they can't, they're obviously building to a larger Spider-Man film involvement. Because in Homecoming, they already introduced Vulture, Shocker, and fucking Scorpion. Half of the Sinister Six in one movie just introduced.
Yeah.
They didn't really introduce Shocker, they showed off the Shocker.
They even called him Shocker.
Yeah.
He even said the name.
They called him Shocker in the movie.
Yeah. I feel like somebody else is gonna steal that shit.
That's what happened in the movie.
Yeah, it's not gonna be- But, uh, yeah, that's definitely a thing, and then they've got Mysterio coming in, we're probably gonna get another reveal, and then maybe a post-credits come together.
I don't, I'm very confused, uh, how Mysterio comes in if the next Spider-Man is far from home. Because it's making it sound as if it's going to take place-
In space?
Off Earth. Just somewhere off Earth, probably not on, um. What's it, is it called Titan?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not on Titan, but elsewhere is like based on the title.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm hoping it's instead just somewhere that isn't like Brooklyn.
Yeah. Uh. Who do you think?
Queens, rather.
Would be the fifth and sixth members. I don't think it'll be Green Goblin, because I think they're legitimately too afraid to do that. Because Willem Dafoe might show up at their doors, and they're just not ready for that.
Is that what happened to Dane DeHaan?
Maybe, maybe that's why he's dead now.
Shit.
Willem Dafoe just said, you stepped on my turf, boy.
R I P Dane DeHaan, you shouldn't have done it.
You could have said Hobgoblin, but no, you fucked up, now I gotta kill you.
But he was okay with James Franco doing it.
That was, uh, different. It's James Franco. Come on, it's James Franco.
It's James Franco.
Come on.
With Dane DeHaan, he was okay up until he did the, the really bad Luke Besson film.
I loved Dane DeHaan as Goblin, that was fun.
I, no, I loved him as Osborn, and he was good going into Goblin. But then he just, in a matter of seconds, turned into full psychopath.
And the face, like-
Frothing at the mouth.
Super wet all the time.
It was just-
It was gross.
It was, it was-
Fucking gross.
It's the one complaint I've had with Amazing Spider-Man Two, is just the Goblin's involvement.
Yeah.
Everything else about was great, the Rhino was fantastic.
My god.
Paul Giamatti was spectacular.
That's the biggest tragedy.
He should come back.
Oh, if, if, I would pay-
He would, if they did Amazing Spider-Man Three, he would have been there in the fucking suit.
Doesn't matter if it's Amazing Spider-Man Three, Spider-Man Away From Home, Paul Giamatti just shows up, Spider-Man. It's very, it's canonically possible that Spider-Man crosses timelines and dimensions.
No.
So, he can go to Amazing Spiderland and meet Paul Giamatti.
Spider-Man Far Away From Home, just going to open up with him in the Soul Dimension, and to see Tobey Maguire and Andrew Garfield there. And they're like, so you died in Spider-Man Two, huh? And he's just like, oh god, I gotta get out of here and save my career, and that's a movie, it's just him trying to pitch to Marvel that he's still worth it.
See, the picture I have is like-
Been, uh, two movies so far, right?
Yeah, yeah.
No, he's, he's been in three movies.
Infinity War.
Uh, he was in Civil War.
He was in Civil War.
Yeah, no, so he's been in three movies, so he's running his horse.
He's, uh-
He's me, Andrew Garfield.
He's got one more, and then he'll be in four, and then he'll be the reigning Spider-Man.
The Raimi Spider-Man?
Yeah.
Far, far away from home is Sam Raimi?
The Sam Raimi's far away from Spider-Man?
I'm excited for Spider-verse.
He will be the reigning Spider-Man.
That, that's, uh, that's what I'm excited for, Spider-verse, I think it's gonna be whack.
I'm actually, right now, more excited for Venom verse, because it has Venom. He's my, he's my favorite all-time Spider, uh, man rogue.
It's the tongue.
As well as like one of my favorite Marvel characters ever. Um, a lot of Vamps are actually pretty terrible, but just as a concept, I love him.
As a tongue, I love him.
As a tongue, I love him, oh my god, give him a chance to be a hero. But it's, um, like, one of my favorite comic series I always wanted to pick up was the, uh, symbiotes, where they had Carnage and, uh, toxin and shit.
Carnage is getting a standalone, right? That's been confirmed?
I don't, I don't think it's been hard confirmed.
Okay.
But, um, be, based on, uh, Venom, like, pre-hype, they're thinking about doing Carnage. The Venom movie trailer has actually gotten more views than any Spider-Man trailer ever has.
It's because it's Venom, and, and, uh, a lot of it is that it's Venom, but it's Tom Hardy.
It's Tom Hardy, it's Venom, it's sixty-four million views, I think.
How many people are gonna watch it just to watch some more Tom Hardy?
It's, I'm top that list. It's, I'm bad at Venom, because it's got Tom Hardy, who I adore, it's got Venom, who I adore. But for whatever reason, it still doesn't look good, and I have to see it.
I, uh, I hope it's not too Punisher-y, cuz that's the vibe I'm getting, it's, it's just a little, not too real, but something about it. I'm just like, this isn't a super real story, like, you can be a little, a little weird with it, and it feels like-
I hope they get pretty weird with it. Speaking of, Walter Garg- Goggins is in Ant-Man and the Wasp, why didn't anyone tell me?
Didn't know that was a thing.
Yeah, he plays like a villain.
Oh, there's gonna be a villain in the movie, but that isn't, uh-
Ghosts or Ava.
Awesome, awesome villain, talking about great villains.
Did you know that, uh, Ghost and Walter Goggins last worked together on Tomb Raider twenty seventeen?
Really?
Yeah.
Huh.
Where he also played the villain, and she played I Don't Remember.
Is that the girl from Remember Me?
She's the, uh, also the villain from, uh, Ready Player One, she was the top lady subordinate, uh, right below the cup.
She had a really stupid name.
It was, it was, whatever it was, it was bad.
It was like an abbreviated thing, too. Oh, man, I'm gonna call her, uh, Malavicious for the time being. Because that's an equally hammy name to what hers was.
Such a bad name. Calling you out, DM.
Uh. But yeah, no, I, uh. What movie were we talking about?
Oh, Tomb Raider twenty eighteen.
Yeah, Tomb Raider twenty eighteen.
I don't know.
Oh, Ant-Man.
Uh, that's the last time he worked on it.
Ant-Man comes out soon, look forward to that.
The sixth, right?
You know what doesn't come out soon? More Star Wars spinoffs, possibly, probably, maybe, but not really.
So, the, they, there is a hard rumor going around, like, because Solo flop, because Disney should have made it, and Ron Howard sucks. They're killing, uh, Star Wars Solo movies, or, or just standalone.
Standalone, sorry.
Solo is, god damn it.
Yeah.
It was such a good word, um. So there was that hard rumor going around, okay, so it like made back its money, but its profits are minimal.
Yeah.
So Disney's not gonna do it again, and then Disney addressed it saying, there's nothing substantiate this, I won't be worried. Um, but they didn't say that they were still working on anything, and despite they're saying that it shouldn't be a worry. There's actually still everything pointing towards that they have halted, uh, production on all their stand-alones.
The original story was that there was just like hard, uh, like, more than a rumor, less than a fact. Uh, that they were halting, that's it, it was finale.
Without the I, it was F.
Apostrophe.
Nally. Um, from Ready Player One, the actress who plays a ghost, uh, just bringing that back, but please continue.
Uh, but yeah, they, it was all but, you know, believable, that they were putting the standalone Star Wars films, or Star Wars stories on halt.
Right.
Um, and then like a day later, they kind of responded to it, and they were like, well, maybe not. But they also weren't like, we're definitely doing projects, and we're not unsuspending the many things that we currently have suspended. And Obi-Wan and Fed are all still in limbo right now, and so it's, it's sort of like, we're doing it, but not. For a while, and maybe we just pretend like we are until you forget.
This is one of the situations where I hope the rumor isn't true, because, yes, by god, I want Disney to understand how poorly, or just how bad they fucked up with Solo. And what everyone was saying up until it came out, or everyone who had a brain, sorry, some people were stupid, and they have been proven wrong. I stand victorious. Um, but, where was I gonna look at this? Oh, I hope it doesn't kill the production of other things. Because with James Mangold working on Fed, I have high expectations for it.
Yeah, I know, Fed looked like it was gonna shape up to be a really fucking solid project.
Looked like it would be pretty okay.
Anything with the bounty hunters will turn out good. Star Wars' bounty hunters are just-
Bounty Hunter movie that had like, even if it was just like IG eighty-eight in Fed, with maybe some appearances of, um, uh, the fucking Bugface guy. I'm forgetting his name, starts with a Z, and like Bosc and stuff.
Yeah.
That'd be amazing.
If they just had the Cantina gang get together.
They just have the Cantina gang get together, just-
Hey guys, one last time. We gotta get the band back together.
No, it's interesting though, that if they are, you know, halting production, they still have Alden Aaron Rich on for two additional solo movies.
Well, they've got him to play Solo two more times, which means that they could-
If they do the bounty hunter movie, they have him show up.
They could do a Fed movie, he could literally-
Carrie Fisher's ghost thing.
Well, no, like, a, uh, a brief post-scene, or post-credit scene, where him and Fed bump into each other. And it's just a funny little moment, that fulfills the needs of the contract, that counts as being in a film as Solo. So, I feel like at least one of his next two movies, that's what it's gonna be, it's just gonna be a brief appearance.
I hope that's what it is, and not to be mean to him, cuz I actually didn't hate him as Han Solo.
I did.
I remember we talked about this, his, his, uh-
It's the face.
No, his performance wasn't bad, though.
No, his performance was fine, it was just, he was still the wrong guy for the role.
He was still the wrong guy for the job, but he did try and make up for it, and the effort was noted.
Yeah.
I, I now wanna give him shit for that. I do wanna, uh, give just the Solo movie, uh, team shit, because, now I was thinking about this actually a lot yesterday and the day before. The Solo that's in Solo is one hundred percent a completely different character. Even given it's like ten, twenty years before, uh, New Hope.
Mm-hmm.
It just cannot be the same person as Han Solo that Ford played.
No.
And one for one, like, the way the character's morals are, his thought processes, the way that he deals with things. That person just cannot evolve to what Solo is in the original trilogy, and that's what frustrated me. Is that his entire, like, cuz the motive that spun him around in Solo was, oh, I'm gonna do good things and save people and be a good guy.
Yeah. Well, it was never that he was a bad guy, ever.
It was just like, I'm not a bad guy, I'm joining the Empire because I have to, and then I'm going to stand up to my officer and say, we're invading their planet. Cuz I'm a fucking hero now, because I'm a good guy.
That was weird.
It was so, god.
But then you, you fast forward, and he's just like, bounty hunter for life, don't ever bother me unless you have money. This is everything that I am, I am like just so epitomally, I am like ego and charisma. Wrapped into a bounty hunter-shaped package, and it's like, I know it's been a while and you've been doing it, but. You, uh, you took a big one-eighty there.
Yeah, yeah, quite a, it's, like, I had problems when Han Solo was in Episode Seven. Uh, simply because, like, he was still doing Han Solo stuff as a smuggler, and that was cool, that was true to the character.
Yeah.
But he was doing it like very poorly, and I, that didn't make sense to me, is how he was so unsuccessful in doing that.
Like, you don't just forget how to do it, you don't lose the connections.
Where he's in like the darkest point in his life, where he can't manage to do anything, he lost the Falcon, him and Turi Aron, like a fucking cargo freighter. Trying to sell cargo to the same people, um, and not managing to sell to either, because they're terrible.
Yeah, it, uh, just that, I can't imagine that, even if you were trying to make like the bleakest version of it, that you would go with that.
It's frustrating, because, and I, a lot of people take a stance of, like, with the original trilogies, of these characters are the best ones. And they're the best interpretations of, um, and they don't like how the new trilogy has changed stuff, they don't like how the, uh, prequel trilogy. And, um, like, interpretate things.
Mm-hmm.
But the original trilogy Han Solo is actually the only true Han Solo, and the only one worth watching.
Yeah.
And he's been in two movies past that, that's been terrible.
Solo's timeline is fucked.
Yeah.
Because Luke and Leia are born during that film.
Well, he's not the same age as them. He never was.
No, but like he's also not. That much older.
He's not that much older, but.
But that's the other thing too is like, when you think about like age wise, like where he has to kind of fall. It's really, it's, it's messy. Like there's no clean, like believable. He is twenty in this movie. And that means he's twenty years older than them or more because they haven't been born yet.
There's one way we can figure this out.
For this.
Okay.
It's that if George Lucas had his way with these movies, they would have, it would have been okay. We would have understood the force in its entirety. And everything in Star Wars would have made sense.
We'll get to that.
I don't answer the question. That's a poor segue, but we'll jump to that in a second. Real response to your question. Um, the one way to check it out is to watch the entirety of Rebels. See Maul's involvement, his timeline, piece together where he is, where he's been, when he dies, what happens. Figure out at what point that is that he could have been in the credit sequence of Solo. And then figure out where in relation in Rebels at that point, the overall timeline is to what that is. To pinpoint exactly how old he is for that.
It's a lot of work just to understand where we are.
And I don't care to do it, but someone might.
Someone has, I guarantee it. Michael.
What?
Let's talk about the midichlorians.
Okay, so if you guys have seen Star Wars, the Phantom Menace. You know about the most key important part of the plot ever known as the midichlorians, the things that Anakin Skywalker has a dick ton of.
He's a chock full of them.
He's got so many that Qui-Gon Kenobi decides, hey, let's take him off this sand planet.
Qui-Gon Jinn.
I know what I said.
Kenobi voted against it, so what you said was wrong.
Don't give a shit. So apparently.
Space Liam Neeson was like, man, this kid's got so much bacteria. We should take him.
He's got so much bacteria that allows the will of the force to flow through him.
But uh, that's all we ever got. They, in, in somehow, he set that up.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, and I say somehow because it's George Lucas and when he has an idea.
He had this in the original trilogy as well.
He.
And his wife was like, no, you gotta, you gotta get rid of this. And then like the, and then the second trilogy comes around and it's like, I'm gonna do this. And then the people like, no. You're not, we're gonna, we're gonna stop you.
So he like, he like dips a toe into midichlorians. And then just ignores it for the rest of the, the prequel trilogy, which was super fucking weird.
It's.
That's what I think ticked a lot of people off about it.
Percent because of the backlash.
Like the people were ticked off because of what it represented and how it just completely fucked the force. But I think it didn't age well because it just, it became a throwaway. It was like you were gonna drop this huge bombshell that changes the definition of the force that's been standing for thirty years. And then you're just gonna drop it. It's like at least have the guts to just tell people, I know you hate it, but this is what I'm doing. Fuck you.
That's kind of what he said.
What he wanted to do if he got seven through nine. It's because he sold the rights. If he chose not to and he somehow got funding for a new trilogy. It's what he would have done.
That dude eats money.
He, he just eats bills. He, I don't know what he does with all the money, but he burns through it.
But um.
He's got thing, he has needs, sick twisted needs.
A New Hope was originally called like Legacy of the Wills or something cuz his entire thing. Um, his entire story has always been about the Wills.
Wills, W H I L L S.
W H I double L S. Um, and they are essentially like the midichlorians. And um, his uh, explanation of it is when a human gets into a car to drive around and go influence things. It's that's what midichlorians are to humans. Is they are using us as tools to bring about what they want to happen.
They are the, the, the driving motion behind the universe. And we and every living thing are their vehicles.
So it's like the force is real, except it's not just some intangible power that one can tap into. It isn't like just a balance of the universe that one can channel. So Lucas, it is actually something that is really using you is a sentient being. That is ruled by this race of the Wills that actually use all of us and we have predestined actions. And none of us have free will because Wills dominate everything we do through the force.
So Anakin didn't have a choice about cut, cutting Count Dooker's head off, no matter what Palpatine said to influence him.
Exactly.
But uh.
Palpatine wasn't telling Anakin to do it. Palpatine was telling the Wills.
The Wills were telling Palpatine to do it.
And they exist on like a, like a subatomic universe level, like they're, they're not like.
They're not the meichlorians. They're smaller than. They use the meichlorians to use us.
It's, it's a whole weird thing and it's on. At, at the absolute surface level, if you don't think about it whatsoever, it's a cool concept.
It's an okay concept.
When you try to apply it whatsoever, it's so problematic.
Thinking about, I don't have as many problems as, as you seem to, simply because. Uh, the way he did go at the original trilogy is very different than what his original story was. And because of that, um, he couldn't never actually go about telling what his core story of Star Wars was. Because he drifted from it. And when he tried to go back to that core story, it was so vividly different. That just could not work and he should have just stuck to what he had uh, already malformed.
The problem I have with it is the Wills are their own movie. They're their own universe. They're their own entire thing and you cannot put them into anything. If it is not entirely about them, they cannot exist because what you're saying is that. There is a, you know, beneath, like right below are you, yeah. Inside of everything is a universe of this race of very sentient, very influential, very powerful beings. That for some reason, control life and make things happen. And every single thing you see on the screen is determined because a bunch of tiny people wanted it to happen. That's problematic, like every, everything.
Is the key driving plot line behind Star Wars?
I don't know why you guys have a problem with Inside Out.
Inside Out was just the Wills. What do you mean you guys? I haven't seen it.
I thought you shat on it.
Where is this coming from?
You've said multiple times, like you've just shat on Inside Out.
No, no, I don't. I think I said once that Shad did Inside Out, but I've never shat on Inside Out.
There's a big difference here, pal.
Yeah, there's a pretty big difference, like. This is a big difference there, Nick. It's a little bit.
You need to see it. Stop being vocally against it, even though you haven't seen it.
What if I've been vocally against?
Right now, you've said on at least one occasion.
I'm just saying, yeah, that was just the Wills.
No, you've said before that it was just an awful movie or something. I was like, where's that coming from?
Right. I can't say that if I haven't seen the movie.
That's what was weird about it.
You, you find me which one of these I said it in and I'll apologize, but until then you are a liar and a cheat.
My life would be a lot easier if I had just recordings of everything.
Oh my god.
If you, if you had that thing from Black Mirror, you could just play back your memories.
Oh golly. I don't want that. I just want a tape recorder.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I just, just the tape recorder. Don't give me anything more than that.
They're, they're cheap. You could just buy one.
All the time, oh man. Archives, servers cost money, man.
Though yeah, it's frustrating. It's like, oh man, I would love to just be able to. And you can do it on your phone actually, but it's, even once you have that, you can't run it all the time.
Also, like what if you witness a crime or like you engage in a criminal activity? Then you could accidentally cause a mistrial. Because you didn't inform them that they were being recorded or have like the uh, the permission, like the, the things that allow you to record someone.
Hundred percent does depend on state and not federal level. Arizona actually, um, you could go into targets. And just record a meeting with your boss without any laying him know. And then use that uh, to go HR.
See, I always thought it was a federal thing that you couldn't use recordings as evidence of things if they weren't knowing that they were being recorded. Unless you had like FBI, like wiretap permissions, that kind of thing.
Because each state does have different laws and Arizonans are actually very lenient in the workplace and actually um, supports we, the worker.
Which is funny cuz we're a right to work state where you can be fired at a moment's notice for no reason.
Well, the reason you're fired at a moment's notice is because you brought a fucking tape recorder into the meeting with your boss.
Yeah, you can do that and you could take him to HR and then you can get fired.
And then you can sue the company and then you can win.
Yeah.
But it's a right to work state.
It is a right to work state, but that does always have its limitations.
I thought it was just like a, you cannot sue for any level of any kind of uh, fired for in.
It, it does have several uh, levels that you can act upon. That might be one of them. Um, but it's uh. It's, I don't know. I, I can't run it all the time and I wouldn't know when to run it until after it's happened.
Exactly.
So you would like that El Gato playback where a couple seconds afterwards, you can like roll back.
Oh god, no, no, no. I'm just going to, no matter what technology comes about, actually live completely without the replayability. And go out of my way to like just never get something that is always recording or always. And like if either of you ever get that.
Have it off around you.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not chilling with you guys.
I uh, one of my favorite things uh, working in various forms of electronics over time is um. People who have security concerns, like somebody comes in. I have the smartphone and I wanna get a new phone and like I've had so many old people. Now they won't be able to track me with this, right? They can't see my stuff. The government's not gonna have this, like advertisers aren't gonna have this. Will they? Companies won't be able to buy my information. Like they're always so concerned about like spies and like corporate spying. And people invading their privacy and lives. I'm like, okay. I'm gonna tell you right now and I don't mean to spook you, but it's twenty eighteen and you're alive. Everything about you is shared and known by literally anybody who cares to know it.
Yeah.
That's just a thing. So you better give up now. You can, you know, protect yourself from, you know, like scammers. But as far as like if, you know, Google wants to know anything about you, they'll know it. If they want to know, they have the means to know it. So give up and stop trying to pretend like you can be off the grid.
Yeah, it's. No, it's fine. They'll get off the grid. And generations and like they're the generation that actually went and put all these policies into power. And then they're like, but I want it to affect me.
Yeah, if it affects me, then fuck that. Fuck that shit. We're getting rid of that.
I wanna make money off it, but I don't want it to, you know, make me uncomfortable.
God. I hate people in politics.
No, you don't. You love people in politics. You love uh, what's his face?
Baroness Von Bear?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, no, it's a lady.
She running for?
I don't care. If you live in the city of Tempe, Arizona, Baroness Von. Von Bear, B E H R is running for who gives a shit. Vote for her. Because her name, it's like Julia Krasinski or something and then just underneath that Baroness Von Bear.
Baroness Von Bear.
Yeah, vote for her.
It's actually Irina's shit.
Because like.
US Congress?
Holy shit.
Alright, so yeah, she's um.
Wow, she an awful person.
For US Congress District Nine. Now is the time that all good men and women come to the aid of our capitalized country. Hi, I am Irina Baroness Von Bear and I'm running for Congress in Arizona's ninth district. You will see that I am not the typical candidate. I am not a career politician.
I'm not your average girl.
And I don't come from a family of politicians, nor am I a wealthy heiress or come from a wealthy family.
Then what's with the title?
I am an army brat and come from a middle class family.
Where's the Baroness Von Bear about? Who's her husband?
Pushing to fight for the amendments.
What, what baronship do we have out here?
Whether or not you live in District Nine, you can join a movement to change Washington by contributing to my campaign. Uh, twenty bucks a month.
What does she care about? What are the issues?
For twenty dollars a month, the price of one cup of coffee a week.
Where are you getting your coffee, Irina? Why is your coffee twenty dollars?
Damn.
That one covers one day in a week. You need thirty people contributing twenty dollars a month to drink coffee every day? I couldn't even try to spend that much on coffee.
I easily, I easily could.
I, I don't think I could. Dollar cup of coffee?
No, I could buy three things that go past. I'll just drink.
Cup of coffee a day, twenty or was it twenty or thirty?
I don't think Starbucks has a drink that can go that expensive.
Yes, they can. The most expensive Starbucks drink is like fifty-four bucks and it's nasty.
I'll take it.
Some guy got like a.
Did you like experiment with that?
Some guy, it was like years ago. Some dude got a birthday coupon and it's a one free drink, no questions. And so he actually spent a lot of time uh, calculating what the single most expensive drink you could make at a Starbucks was. And he got like a fifty-four dollar drink for free.
So she pushes that she's just a male class American army brat, but she went and got the evil Baroness headwear. And the full evil Baroness outfit.
We need to put this on.
We're gonna, I'll show it to the camera if you're a visual listener, but um, we'll, we'll link this uh, in, in the description below.
Not the most like Baron, evil Baron thing.
That is Irina Baroness Von Bear, just a male class American fighting for the constitution.
I'm just middle class American.
Oh my god, she looks sinister.
Is what middle class American woman would say if she was American.
American, which she is. She does not like Muslims. Oh my god. I went through like one page.
Oh no, why did, you didn't wanna go past any more than the opening page. That was the cleanest thing we could find, Nick. Why would you jump to the, I don't like Muslims?
Why does that not surprise me with that picture though?
Of, of course it doesn't surprise you.
Oh.
Why would anything surprise you about Baroness Von Bear?
That's just a full fur coat. She's just, she's one hundred percent a Baroness.
Wow. Who's the Baron? What? Why is there a Baron of Tempe?
No, it doesn't have to be a Baron of Tempe.
Are we subjects?
I guess now we are legally.
Like legally or like socially, yes and yes.
Should I care about my Baron?
Yes.
Yeah, your Baron protects you from the waistline.
Because I'm assuming the Baron is.
Is that like her, like a name?
Not you, not the German general during World War Two.
No, we wanna hear about Jermaine Gerald.
Wait, is there any relation?
We gotta get freaking the Baroness Von Bear on the show. That won't be difficult.
I can't imagine.
We just say, hey, this is our anti-Muslim guest. And she'll be like, I'm all about it.
Did you say anti-Muslims?
You see this fur coat?
Oh man. You see this fur coat?
Just get come in with like the full, like pure white inbred cats.
Oh yeah.
No, we.
She'll be wearing a black outfit and somehow it won't shed.
We'll come up to her wearing just like LARPing outfits or something. Like great Baroness Von Bear. We request your presence.
Great mistress. We have bought you eighteen cups of coffee.
For, we brought you twenty dollars worth of coffee.
You come up to her with a platter and it's just got like the, like three twenty dollars cup of coffee. For her Baroness. We plead thee, make a small, small entrance on our anti-Muslim podcast.
I swear.
For the price of only twenty-five dollars a week, you can help crowdsource your anti-Muslim podcast.
She's gonna up her donations on her website to like fifty-five so that it can funnel.
Doesn't hurt her at all.
Oh man.
Oh god.
I wanna build her a castle. I want her to have a domain.
She already does. It's Tempe.
Oh man. Yeah, just this like fucking sign for this lady is like outside of a Walmart down the street from where we live. And I just like, I wanted to like floor my brakes the first time I saw it cuz I was like, what the fuck did that just say?
We should just go take it and put it up on the wall.
Oh god.
Given that's a public corner, that, that's actually okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we're just allowed to take that.
It's only if it's in someone's um, private property.
She's definitely got assassins, but you know, we could, we can deal with that.
I don't think any of those assassins care to move through Guadalupe to make it to Priest and Elliot.
And it's like, let's go.
We've got a lovely barrier between us and the more sinister aspects of the valley.
It's like Sin City, the uh, the old town. Like we just drive into Guadalupe and they just floor the brakes and they're like, oh no.
It wasn't voluntary. It's actually cuz of the eighteen million lights and they just missed the one we made. And you'll never catch someone again because it's the slowest thing.
Maybe we'll catch him at the one stoplight, at the stop sign.
I don't think we will.
Oh, she's actually, she's half-black.
Oh, okay.
She does not look it. You know, given the whole evil Baroness.
She has another website?
Well, uh, this is uh, the same website, different link, I guess. Her father was a black man from the south side of Chicago. Who's, wait a second. Her father served in the segregate, segregated military during World War Two. She's that old. Um, met her mother while in Europe. Her mother is Czechoslovakian naibility. Uh, but between the Nazi invasion and Russian occupation, uh, they lost everything but the title.
So she actually is a Baroness of somewhere in Czechoslovakia.
They just, they lost everything but the title. They like between the war and the occupation, they just lost their land.
Show up and say, hey, I'm the Baroness. Give me my shit back. They have to. It's the rule.
Um. Let's see, blah, blah, blah. Blah, blah, blah. She did some brave thing in Desert Storm. She is old as shit. What the shit? Is she the new John McCain, but like less mentally incapacitated?
She's the last surviving member of the Von Bear clan.
Um.
Wow, this woman has provided much entertainment for me.
That's how I inherited my title and family name and why I hold on to it so dearly. I can buy it. Uh, my husband and I are middle class. We live in the same two thousand square foot house in Tempe that I purchased twenty-eight years ago. I moved to Arizona. Alright, follow-up question. I asked my parents this. Why does A1 move to Arizona? Cuz so many people did twenty or thirty years ago and I can't imagine like living anywhere.
Rush.
No, twenty to thirty years ago. You're living in Ohio. You're in New York. You're in fucking California and you're like, where should I go? The most landlocked, no water, hottest shit place, Phoenix.
Yeah.
That was only farmland at the time.
The thing that gets me is people still do it.
Sense nowadays.
Well, now that we're an asphalt island and we've made the desert hotter somehow.
Yeah, we have. Woo, it don't get cold. Woo, it don't get cold at night anymore cuz we got more heat than the sun.
We're like a big ol' heat sponge. It's one sixteen during the day and ninety-eight at night.
It's one oh seven at night up until maybe one or two AM. It's been so bad lately.
But yeah, no, like a bunch, like we were like the what like the first full generation of a shit ton of people born in Arizona. It has been like a city that people come to for a very long time or a state that people come to for a very long time.
Alright, um, if you look past her personal opinions, that will certainly be expressed if she was given power. She's actually not the worst person cuz she's got the right mentality of, she's actually been a housewife the past like nineteen years. And has only recently decided to get into politics to make a change.
I like that she's aiming high.
I do.
She's not like, I'm gonna become a city councilwoman. She's like, I'm gonna be fucking Congress.
You're so wrong. Um, she served as vice president of her HOA for several years.
Okay.
And she ran for Tempe City City Council in twenty sixteen.
Damn it.
She didn't get it, but she ran.
Irina.
So now she's just gonna jump it and go to Congress because she failed.
I lost the city council bid, but I can be a fucking. I can be a representative.
My rather unique and rich heritage of slavery and nobility has made me a fierce opponent and the right person to one CD nine.
She's every victim in one.
I am a Christian abolitionist and an American in that order. That's the wrong order. Why? No. Do it backwards.
No.
The other order.
She's fine, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. No, no, you're you're wrong, it's fine.
Nick, we could've voted her for for her without knowing, but now we read it and now we can't.
Yeah.
God damn it.
It's a it it's a bit of a feel bad.
Oh.
She's gonna win because of her name.
Oh man, I still don't want her to lose.
I can't hate you.
God damn, nobility is a hell of a plus.
It's just, when are we gonna get another Baroness running for Congress?
Fucking never, she's the last of her kind.
They're an endangered species.
If not for slavery and the segregated military corps, we would have one in Tempe today. She's the ultimate victim. Who hates Muslims.
She takes it out on other victims. Oh golly. Wow, we spent like twenty minutes on.
I regret nothing. I regret nothing.
There's more to talk about when it comes to Baroness Von Bear.
The uh pretty um. Uh, what what's what's the term? Con- controversial Baroness Von Bear cast? Uh, we're looking to have her on soon. Hopefully she hasn't been returning her letters, but we've bought her so much coffee. So I don't see how she can afford to say no.
Oh golly. Every time we buy twenty dollar coffees, can I can I do that as a tax write-off as like a political contribution now?
Uh, this is all meant for Baroness Von Bear, so you fuck the.
Just go to Starbucks, buy a twenty dollar coffee and say, hey, can I get a copy of receipts for tax purposes, you know, Congress?
Baroness Von Bear.
I'm donating this to the Baroness.
On the harsh side Baroness Von Bear. The guy like is, oh, I hate Muslims too and you're, oh shit.
Man, can someone else make my coffee?
What does the like hatred of Muslims make the co- taste of coffee?
It makes it taste bitter.
Is that why she has to pay twenty dollars for coffee?
Yeah, because she has to convince them to do it. It's a bribe. It's a three dollar coffee. But you have to give them a extra seventeen dollars for them to just sit through your very racist rant that you're gonna give.
One cup of coffee a week only makes sense if she's like having it be made in Santa Fe and then pays. To her where she then drinks it.
Who only has one cup of coffee a week? What do you gain?
Just a huge cup of coffee that she imports.
Five dollars a day on coffee and spending thirty-five dollars a week. Twenty dollar cup of coffee a week and you're saving fifteen bucks.
She just buys a barrel every week. But it's like this big, it's a tiny barrel.
Tiny barrel, just like maybe a three gallon barrel?
Yeah. God damn.
What else do we have? Overwatch's new hero.
Oh yeah.
Antaro.
Uh, it's a hamster ball.
Um, it's, his name is Wrecking Ball.
Hammond.
Um, his uh.
Sorry, the hero name on the load screen will be Wrecking Ball, but the character's name is Hammond.
Yep, he was a, he was an experiment on the horizon lunar colony.
Specimen eight.
When the monkeys broke free and did crazy shit. He hitched a ride on uh Winston's pod and uh came to Earth. Um, he's hyper intelligent. He does not speak English. That would be ridiculous. No. He his pod like he, maybe he made a pod, but he hitched a ride on Winston's.
I guess he just split then.
Um, and they landed in two different places. Um, but he lands in Junkertown, he turns his pod into a mech.
And then the queen Junkertown gives him a crown and the crowd loves him.
Yeah, he like.
I assume he killed some people.
He kills the shit out of the Colosseum, like he becomes number one gladiator for life. Um, and nobody knows he's a hamster during all of this because he like hides in his little wrecking ball. Um, but yeah, so that's his thing. He has a grappling hook, so I'm in. Um.
It's, so yeah, he uh has the ability of roll to roll, which I love cuz it's my favorite movement mechanic ever since Behemoth uh introduced it in Evolve twenty fifteen. Amazing game, uh game of the year. Uh, so he has a roll ability, uh automatic quad cannons.
Yep, that's his primary fire is just like guns.
Uh, grapple hook to move around. He can throw out mines and uh raise a shield. And then also has a ground slam.
So when he is in the air, he can uh just drop and deal a good amount of damage. Um, one of his abilities is his roll ability, which can deal some damage. We don't, I mean, he's on the PTR. We could have watched it, but it dropped a little bit before the time of recording, so we haven't seen gameplay. Um, yeah, his ult is a minefield. It takes a bit for it to go off, but when it does, it's some pretty substantial damage. Um, his grappling hook works a lot like Widowmakers, um, it's for mobility. Um, his primary fire is pretty standard, it's like somewhere between Orisa and uh Diva. Um, but he also has an adaptive shields where he can, you hit the key and he gains a flat amount of shield. But for the number of enemies that's around him, he gains more shield. So if you were to drop in between all six of the enemy team and pop it, you would get maximum shields. So that you can just tank and do whatever you're about to do. So you know, a very interesting strategy would be like grapple in, land, ground, pound. Uh, pop your shield and just start decimating while your team comes in and you can just like really disrupt a line. And start attacking him on two ends and he's tanky enough to be a sort of, he's a, he's a flanky tank. Um, and he's very mobile for a tank. It's interesting. Um, but yeah, he's a hamster in a in a ball.
Seems very cool.
Uh, he does not talk, but the mech does. It 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 translates his thoughts into uh words so that he can communicate. Um, but it's definitely not what anyone was expecting. And even this morning, when they had just said like the champion is here and they showed a picture. People were like, well, they didn't say it's the hero. It's probably just like the Ethi Orisa thing, like they're they're just saying it's gonna be. Related and we're actually gonna get Junker Queen.
Um, I pray god we get Junker Queen next.
Eventually, I need her.
She isn't within the next three, I'm actually gonna be disappointed.
But um, so it turned out that it actually is him.
Oh, the grappling cook is amazing.
It's really.
Um, so he mentioned it, I'm actually watching some gameplay right now. He can grapple the point to a building. And then roll around as a fucking tetherball and hit people on that fucking uh uh within that radius.
He's basically a Droidica.
He's a cooler Droidica. He's he's Droidica meets BB eight.
It's pretty.
And that's like genuinely what it is. It's amazing.
Wow, he's um terrifying.
He did. This is again, um, initial PTR update, but he does a lot of damage with all his abilities right now. He's he's doing a a lot of good work. He he moves really, really cool. His movement is fast, it's fluid, the fucking grappling coke enables a lot.
He's nuts mobile.
He's crazy mobile. If they've got a push going, he'll roll right through a wall, jump up and then pop down to disrupt like a Reinhardt with two people behind him thing.
And there's not a lot of spread on his uh.
There has been little to no spread.
There has to be a huge amount of drop off. Yeah, I'm assuming it works like uh, it has to work like soldiers. Where it's probably less damage per bullet, higher rate of fire, but very large drop off, more like Orisa.
Of the wrecking balls in the game, they're all playing him as a shotgun.
Yeah.
Um, so it most definitely should be drop off. Um, but he's very interesting. He actually looks like a hell of a lot of fun.
Yeah.
And I'm excited to play him. I, they're really trying their damnedest to keep Overwatch a good game with all the changes they make and whatnot. Um, I'm always gonna be against it because they make it very much uh an esport game. And a lot of their professional changes come from trying to keep up with the the meta.
The amount of times they've made a change because of the pro scene has been very frustrating.
It has been too many times in my opinion, but it's also how they're making money with the game. And it's how they will continue to make money with the game, so I can't fault them for pursuing uh a profitably positive business practice.
Season one of Overwatch League has already turned a profit. And that's nuts when you consider the initial investment that had to go into it. Like that's not something you make a profit on season one. That's like season two, maybe season three. But they uh, they've already started making money.
The only thing I can fault them for is as far as developer integrity goes in that they with every update. Have managed to alienate some bits of the daily player. The only person I know who hasn't been upset with any update ever made has been Hobbit. Um, but that speaks for a lot of things. Everybody else I know has been disappointed in a lot of different ways with a lot of different updates. I think I'm the only one who's been mad at every single one.
Yeah, I've been net positive. Um, I've wished that they didn't do some things a certain way. That's for sure.
It's, I'm not mad because their changes and some of the changes I think could be done very well. I don't like the way they did a lot of the changes.
But the most, like this month has been incredible for the game.
This.
The new hero, the anniversary event, which went really awesome, like a lot of stuff has just gone very incredible. Um, so it's a, it's a hell of a way to start their second year, that's for sure. Are there?
Third.
Yeah, they're going into their third year. Um, so I I've I've been happy with the game.
It's been getting better.
I haven't really touched it much. I touched it when Bridget came back out, played a little bit. Brigitte came out, but I just immediately dropped it again because it's another first person shooter with very interesting heroes. They did wonder on the character design, it's just, it's not much there to keep me coming back.
I think Hammond will be for people who are in your situation, or sorry, uh, Wrecking Ball. Because he looks just.
To play Michael.
He's uh like watching him, he's a very roam around, like very different. It doesn't really feel like you're playing in FPS when you're watching him cuz he's just doing so much. It's it's, it's very different than any other hero.
You know what I'm waiting on? I'm waiting on the hero that just turns it into like Starcraft.
Can't happen. What do you mean?
Or if you have like some kind of weird RTS mechanic where you're controlling minions throughout the map.
Can't happen.
Yeah, exactly.
They will eventually uh probably have like a Beastmaster type hero, like somebody who uses. Uh, like deployables of, you know, more than like, uh whether it's robot animals or actual animals. Um, that I think is on their kind of shortlist for upcoming heroes. Um, which I think would be really cool.
I think it'd be interesting.
But uh, we're at a little bit over the usual runtime.
A little bit over.
But wait, we had, we got to talk about Baroness Von Bear.
And that's important.
She's very important. She's an up and comer. The next uh presidential election, Hillary versus Baroness Von Bear or something.
Alright, two things um to bring up, just so we don't skip over them cuz we'll address them next week.
Yeah.
Um, if you own a PS four, Greatest Hits is returning. Uh, it was some of the coolest things for PS two and PS threes. They took some of the most popular, most critically playing games and then made them cheaper for people to get. And they're doing that again now with some PS four titles, so that would be something really cool to check out if you haven't played some of them. Um. And then not as important, but GameStop is following the route of Toys R Us.
Oh yeah, uh, so GameStop is uh looking for a buyer because they are going under, um. And you know, the the go-to joke has been, you know, undervaluing them because fuck you for saying that you'd give me ten bucks for my perfectly good Wii. Um.
Yeah.
But yeah, so it's not too surprising though. Like it it, they under their current model could not continue on the scale that they're at.
I've actually, when I've been looking at friends pre-ordering games in the past. And over the past couple months, looking at different things that like GameStop has for exclusive pre-orders. I've been very confused at how they've actually been still been able to make money up until this point with how they run business, especially against the digital market.
Yeah.
And I realized I wasn't wrong and that they haven't been.
Yeah, no, they uh, they needed to embrace digital more, find some sort of way to tap into.
They straight up just sold digital codes off of the GameStop store.
But that wasn't enough.
Yeah.
That was a good first step, but I don't know if there was a way to better integrate.
Like people could just buy it on the console, not even need the fucking code. It just goes straight into the.
The only thing they had going for them was that, you know, if you like having the physical game and there's a lot of reasons to, storage being a big one. It's it's a little bit more that you get out of it.
I personally much rather would have a physical game. I mean, I'm sure it's the hassle of changing it, but yeah.
But um, you know, they uh, they're competing with a whole lot of different things with that and um. You know, they're also competing with just any big box store that also sells them, like Walmart and Target sell them too.
Yeah, Walmart's uh game sales have actually only gone up and up and up over the years and.
You can get it cheaper at Walmart, you can get it cheaper on Amazon. We also, the big thing was always like what exclusively can I get from these two?
I think GameStop is.
Walmart has beat GameStop and uh with a lot of those games cuz Walmart saw that and did it too. Amazon has their own thing. The, I think the biggest thing that started to kill GameStop was when they started to give a lot of uh exclusive. Uh, digital preorder things or like PS store and whatnot. Once I could get like.
Or the.
A fucking stained glass Kingdom Hearts theme from getting it only digitally rather than physically, why the shit am I gonna get the disc?
There is another thing that would have also affected it and it's like, oh, preorder it now and you get the, you get beta keys. If you buy it off the PlayStation Store and then it just gets loaded right on there. Cuz like Tekken did that, uh Blaze Blue Cross, like big fighting games.
Pre-download is pretty big too.
Now that there is a difference, if GameStop does a midnight release and you can get that at like ten PM. You can have it downloaded and playing before anybody else.
You can actually, because of time uh fucking codes. If you're fast enough, you can actually start playing the physical copy sooner than people came out the digital because theirs is locked.
Yeah, and if you're playing something like Dark Souls, then yeah, fuck everybody else cuz now you've got the dark sword and you can just go ham on people.
I felt so, my first playthrough, I found the dark sword. I'm like, this is a cool weapon. And it's the only reason I beat the shit out of everyone PvP is cuz it was the most broke fucking thing.
Oh yeah, it's.
Moisty voice episode fifty-eight, don't vote for Baroness Von Bear.
Yeah. But if you do, like, we can't blame you.
No, we can, we can blame them now.
Well, no, we, if someone votes for Baroness, every, we'll just count the votes for Baroness Von Bear and we know who hates Muslims, just like that number of people.
It's hard not to, but do, do the right thing, even if it hurts.
The Baroness Von Bear cast.
We'll see if we can find a twenty dollar cup of coffee for next time.
I I will struggle to find it, but I will try.